Yay, Andrew.
Good job, Andrew.
Thank you all very much. Now, we will officially open our business meeting. And I'm going to ask everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and invocation.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come to you tonight with a humble heart and an open mind. Please watch over us tonight and help us as we make decisions for the county and all the people. Thank you so much for giving us Ms. Janice and Mr. Harrell for all the hard work they've done. Please watch over them especially and keep them safe and help them to keep moving. Father, please be with everyone here tonight and help them as they leave and keep them all safe. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and go to roll call and let the minutes show that everyone is present. Do you have before you the agenda? Are there any additions or deletions that you would like to add? If not, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Someone say it.
We got a motion. We got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passage unanimous, and we'll jump right into the planning commission recommendations.
Alrighty, our first case 4.1, approval with conditions LU 2401 0014 and rezon Z 2401 0015. This is a request for a land use change from conservation to highway corridor and to rezone 9.11 acres from A1 to M1 for climate-controlled self-storage and office warehouse. The applicant is David A. Carruth, and he's also the owner of the owner AHB, AHC Bentley Bold LLC. Property is located on Highway 81 and Bentley Road, and this is in District 5. When this came before the planning commission, the first time, they tabled it and let the applicant have time to get with the neighbors. They did get together and had a meeting, come up with some suggestions, some conditions. The planning commission recommended that it be approved with, there are seven conditions. Would you like for me to read them all?
For the record, yes.
Okay, alright. Number one, all of the area developed for self-storage shall be fenced with a minimum of a six-foot vinyl-coated chain-link fence. Also, landscape shrubs or evergreen trees shall be established along the side fronting Bentley Road and the rear where adjoining the residual of the Carruth property. Number two, gate access to the self-storage shall limit access seven days a week, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Number three, all exterior lighting shall be directed downward. Number four, the office warehouse area shall be limited in hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m., seven days a week, and no retail shall be allowed. Number five, the sides of the office warehouse fronting Highway 81 and Bentley Road shall have a blend of brick or rock facade. Number six, there shall be a traffic study conducted to determine the possible improvement of the turn radius on Bentley Road at the intersection of Highway 81. And number seven, every effort shall be made to establish an entrance with a right turn in and out only on Highway 81, located at a point most closely located on the property to 7973 Highway 81, which is the solar farm. Also, an entry shall be established on Bentley Road with a D-cell and A-cell lane and located at the furthest point possible from that intersection of Bentley Road and Highway 81.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to open a public hearing on this, and we're going to generally rule 10 minutes each side. And we'll start off with the applicant and those in favor of this, and then we'll go to those in opposition. And please try not to repeat the same objections over and over due to our time strengths. We get it. If it's traffic, it's traffic. If it's whatever, but I appreciate that. So, we'll open the public hearing, and we'll start off with the applicant. Come forward and tell us what they want to do. And start off by stating your name and...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Rosendahl, and I am the owner and developer of Rosewood Development Company. And this is my partner, landowner, David Carruth. This is a joint venture that we're doing together. He owns the land and have owned it for how long?
Forty years.
Forty years. We're proposing to build two climate-controlled storage units, some covered boat and RV parking, and some office warehouse buildings, which is in there. We are proposing to put the entrance to the facility off of Bentley Road. We've reached out to the DOT and spoke to Chris Harsh, or Hash, and he really doesn't like the idea of it going on 81 because they have a roundabout in the near future that's going to be at the corner of, at the intersection of Highway 81 and Bentley Road. So he did recommend us fixing the apron there at Bentley Road, making it a little bit wider in and out, which we wouldn't be opposed to doing. Also, we did meet with the folks around the area on site. We spent a couple hours with them. We answered all the questions that they gave us or asked us. We basically, you know, said we would do whatever, you know, whatever they thought was fair as far as look. You know, they asked about earth tone colors. We agreed to do that. You know, again, we answered lots of questions. I actually asked at one point, you know, what they would like to see, you know, built on this land if not storage, and really the answer was nothing. I think somebody threw out a cemetery or something. I was like, you know, well, obviously, we're not building a cemetery, but... So, all in all, it didn't sound like anything we would propose to put on the property would be something we weren't going to get opposition on. So I wanted to make that clear. We, you know, I did make the comment, what would you guys like to see? And the answer was nothing. So, with that being said, we'd still like to get this done. We're still open to suggestions. I have no problem with any of the conditions. I believe they're all fair. The only thing is the entrance on 81, I don't think the DOT wants it. We've asked them if we could do it, and they just, they haven't approved it as yet, but we don't have anything officially to submit to them other than what you guys are looking at. That's it. Anything I had?
Alright, Mr. Carruth, you've owned this property how long?
Well, this particular piece, we've been farming out there for 40 years, but probably about 30, 35 years.
Alright. Are there any questions from the board at this point? Alright, thank you all.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here in favor of this rezon that would like to come forward and make a statement?
Mr. Chairman, Board, my name is Bill Devall, 404 Chickamauga Court, Loganville, Georgia. Just standing before you today, say that my family's lived on Bentley Road. We've got, well, not lived on Bentley Road, we've had property on Bentley Road. Our property borders the Carruths. We're there at Bentley in Bold Springs. We've been there since 62, is the way I understand it. That was before I was born. But the Carruths have been a very good neighbor, very good friends. We understand what they're doing, and I just wanted to stand up and say we're in favor of it, the support, and just appreciate your time. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mr. Devall. Is anyone else here in favor of this rezon? Alright, we'll open it up for the opposition. Please come forward, state your name, where you live, please. If you're the first one, raise your hand.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name's Steve Phillips. My address is 2204 Arden Quest Way, Bethlehem. I live in the Arden Quest neighborhood, which is within walking distance of the proposal of the property in question. Our community, I think, has been long-established as a residential area. Between the county line down at the Appalachian River and Bentley Road, there are at least four long-established neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods, and there are others very close. There's another one right down on June Ivy Road. So it's surrounded by established residential neighborhoods, and this would be right in the middle of them. I believe that the opinions, the decisions you make today, this evening, will affect literally hundreds of taxpaying homeowners, so I hope you'll consider it very carefully. The rezoning and land use change represented in this proposal, we think, especially in Arden Quest, kind of represents a tipping point. What comes next is our concern. Of course, we're concerned about this one, but we've already had one next door, the solar facility, and now this is right next door. So what comes next? We are concerned about that. Our home values will absolutely go down significantly if this area is turned into an industrial corridor. There's just no doubt about that. No ifs, no ands, no buts. We also believe that our quality of life will follow closely behind that. For all these reasons, we are really opposed to this. I think Arden Quest, as far as I can tell, it's about 100% opposed. A lot of the other places, neighborhoods, I know there's significant opposition. The meeting the gentleman talked about did happen. We appreciated that opportunity. We did make a suggestion that we wouldn't mind residential homes being put there, for sure. That was brought up. But we're not interested in an industrialization of our home. We're a resident community fighting to keep it that way. Please don't open the door for this request and the inevitable further industrialization of our community that will follow. This is our home that we're talking about. I'm going to close by quoting somebody. Nancy Reagan, "Just say no." Thank you.
Thank you very much. And who is next? Please come forward. State your name and address, please.
Good evening. Megan Linebaugh, I'm Shadowwood Drive in District 5. I don't know Chris or David, and I'm sure that they are lovely gentlemen. My opposition today is primarily based on my concern for the precedence that this would set relative to future land use change and rezoning changes. So if you are just an average citizen like me, what you may not understand, I didn't understand that until this week, is that this particular request is not just a rezon request. This is a change of land use. Then that needs to be changed, then the rezon can be approved or disapproved. So what we're looking at here is page 20 of the Comprehensive Land Development Ordinance and Subdivision Regulations, page 20, has a chart that outlines the character areas for the existing comprehensive land use plan. This specific parcel is currently characterized as conservation, which is, according to this chart, the most conservative use of land. The reason that they can't just rezon this under the existing character area is because M1 zoning is not allowed under conservation. So that's why, this is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that's why they're having to ask for a change in the character or in the land use of this parcel. So they're moving from conservation, which is the most conservative, to highway corridor, which is the highest density, okay? Under a highway corridor land use, M1 zoning is allowed, okay? My concern as a resident of District 5 is that, similar to what the gentleman before me said, this is going to set a precedent that I'm, I just don't see us being able to roll back. So if you approve this, what you're basically saying is all existing A1 parcels, I live on A1 in District 5, so if I come back to you next month, I can then get my parcel changed to highway corridor M1, so it sets a very dangerous...
Do you live on a state highway?
Hmm?
Do you live on a state highway?
I don't, but then I guess...
Then you can't get it changed to M1.
Okay, but then I could do...
Oh, it's mute that you're trying to make.
Okay, but then I could. If you're going to go from a conservation all the way to highway corridor, then you're setting the precedent that you're actually not utilizing the comprehensive land use plan as your guide. And that's my concern, because when we look at the number of rezon requests that this board has approved over the last two years, in 2022, it was over 80% of rezon requests were approved, and in 2023, it was over 50. So we're seeing a trend toward the majority of rezon requests being approved, which I would echo what the gentleman before me said. That's a concern that the chances are, moving forward, if you approve this, that that opens up that entire Highway 81, I just drove by it today, there's nothing in that immediate area that's anything like this. But anything that is along there, you're basically opening the door for that. So that's my, I'm sure that their plan for storage units and things of that nature is nice, but the precedent that this sets, especially for District 5, which where I live, is a concern to me. So I would appreciate that if you stuck with the comprehensive land use plan, because those of us that moved here were told that that was the guiding document that would be used by this commission when you were making rezon and land use decisions. If we cannot, as citizens, count on you for that, then I would ask you to let us know what we can count on relative to you making decisions like this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, who's next? Please.
Hello, my name is Suzanne. My husband, Phil Culler, and I moved to Arden Crest in 2012. And it may surprise you to hear me say that before we moved here in 2012, we had been vacationing in Walton County for 10 years. We love our neighborhood. We love the people that live in our neighborhood, and we love the people that are in the surrounding neighborhood. Mister, the tree farm has been an excellent neighbor. We've enjoyed watching his business grow and its success. I'm not sure, however, that an RV storage facility or a warehouse would be a good neighbor. It just makes me sad. I really appreciate the opportunity that you've given us to speak, and I think you heard from the woman previous to me that some of us are just learning things about how this process works. For instance, at first glance, at the land use map, I can't find anything in the documentation that said that there was any public comment received during the planning of that or in creation of that document where anyone suggested that it would be a good idea to make that a commercial road instead. And I don't want to sound tacky, but it almost seems a bit disingenuous that such a huge and dramatic change to a highway would be happening with just a simple rezoning of a small parcel. I also object to the fact that we're hearing tonight for the first time that it's possible that the egress, the entry and the exit for this property would be on Bentley Road. Bentley Road is a residential road, and I would think rather than being a cut-through like it is now from Bold Springs to 81, it should be a no thoroughfare, even to the extent I would think that there should be some speed bumps on it. It's 25 miles an hour, and on two times, I have been passed by a car on that road, literally passed by another car. And I was afraid that I could be a victim of road rage, so I just slowed up, slowed below my 25 miles an hour, out of respect for the families that live there, and I'm not, I'm sad to say that I don't know them by sight. I've met several of the people during our years here that live on that road, but I don't have my glasses with me, so I don't know that I could recognize them, but I...
Okay, keep going, please.
Okay. I would think that they would have serious concerns about a business entrance that would use this tiny piece of road 12 to 14 hours a day, and that they would be subject to, I shouldn't say subject to, I know, in my prior life, I had two careers. I was in property development. I learned at the knee of Tom Cousins and Jerry Reinsdorf, who owns the White Sox. And I did commercial, residential, industrial, multifamily, single-family. After that, I went to work and was very, very honored to work under three administrations of in-state government in Texas, under Governor Perry, George W., and the late Ann Richards. One of the things that I did, working for the state, was to make sure that what local communities, developers, nonprofits, government entities, what they said stuck. My job was the director of compliance, and I oversaw every contract post-award in the state of Texas. And I can tell you, some of the worst problems that we had came from poor planning. There's always an option for a piece of land. There's always an option. It can go anywhere from a bargain sale agreement, where the seller of the property can get a tax benefit by giving it to a community such as Walton to build a playground, to build a park. There are things called a housing tax credit, which I'm very proud to say has found its way into Walton County.
I understand the tax credits, but we're talking about this particular tract, please.
What I'm saying is there are options, and when the developers ask what we would like to ask, what we would like to see, people answered individually. It was not as if there was a public hearing and people got to line up and speak. There was no representative from county staff there to hear the suggestions that were made and the responses that were given. Because of what everyone has said tonight, there's two questions I would like to ask. First, in that very first meeting, how many people in opposition rose to be counted? 10, 20, 30, 40? How many rose in support? What I understand was the owner, the developer, and an employee of the owner. How many people showed up at the corner of the road of 81? I spoke to several people who live in Providence. They drove by, didn't know where to park, and kept going, but I do know that they did come to several meetings. Because of these concerns, because of the new things that we continue to learn, especially about the DOT conversation, and as we know, anything that you have is a conversation with a federal entity, it ain't worth anything till you have it in writing. And the fact that they don't want this property egress on 81 should speak loud volume to us. So I would suggest that this be tabled for further discussion. I know that there are probably time limits that are approaching. There may be a rate lock that's coming close by. We don't know all the people involved, so I can't say what all the issues may be, but I guarantee you, with just the few that we've heard tonight, I guarantee you, there's going to be more, and they're probably going to be more serious.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Warren, I appreciate your support in the past. Chairman Thompson, you've been extremely, extremely kind and thoughtful to listen to this tonight, and I do want to appreciate, offer my appreciation to the board, because I have seen the affordable housing being built in this community that one would never have expected to see, and you are to be congratulated for it. I really thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the 10 minutes, has anyone got any objection that hadn't been raised? Yes, ma'am. Can you be brief?
Hi, my name is Dotte Cardo. I'm an HOA member of Ivy Brook Estates. I live on Ivy Brook Drive, right off June Ivy. I was traveling home tonight on Bentley Road, heading towards 81, took the shortcut, was going to cross to my left. I had to stop and wait about 20 minutes. This is right around 3:30 because there was another accident. Someone, I don't mind directions, but someone was coming, looks like from 81, from Loganville, heading towards Winder, and had gotten off the road, came off the road into a gully. Actually, when I was on Bentley, a big flat tow truck was coming my way, past me, that was going to pick up the victim, I hope. I tried to call the sheriff's office to find out if the person was okay. Don't know. So that's my concern. I'm not going to be redundant about everything else that was said, but my concern is safety. There's been several accidents. I wasn't planning to come tonight, otherwise I would have done some research. I think some people in my neighborhood have done research, but I do know there have been accidents. I'm not sure if there's been fatalities. The traffic is very hard, the visibility is not good to cross either way, going straight or going either way. They come so fast. Personally, I look at least 10 times both ways, and sometimes I still have somebody tailgating me. So I'm going to end. Opposed, and I do believe I represent my neighborhood or the folks that are here tonight, we are in opposition for it as well.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, we have to give the applicant a chance to rebut what's been said, and I believe someone come in that wanted to speak for this, that got here late, storms or whatever, and we give him an opportunity at this time to... And then we'll have the applicant come up for rebuttal.
Yeah, my name's Dave Martin. It's not the storms, it's just when you get my age, all you ever do is go to the damn doctor. You know, just a little bit of information about me. We moved out to Gwinnett County when we got married. I had used the GI Bill to buy our first house, and we... When we moved to Gwinnett County, there were 65,000 people that lived in Gwinnett County. 65,000. Well, I don't know how many people live in Walton County now, but there's probably not that many more people. There are, I'm sure there are, but not more than 65, you know, a little more than 65,000.
We're 103,000.
Oh, well, I was wrong then. All right. Folks, I'm going to tell you something and-
But we're a huge county.
I spent a lot of time in, working with the folks in Gwinnett County over the years. When I finally left, I was chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for Gwinnett County. And I'm going to tell you, you can do whatever you want to, and you can stand up, and you can shout, and you can yell. You're not going to stop the growth that's coming to this county, period. So you got to make a decision is what is it you want? Now, this particular piece of property right here, probably after it's developed and everything, you're looking at eight, 10, maybe 12 cars a day that would be coming in and out of that piece of property. You're not looking at hundreds of cars. Now, you can wait, you can let it go, it'll get zoned commercial. Somebody with big bucks will come in and you'll have a racetrack filling station there. Now, how many cars are going to come and go inside that? A bunch. You'd be better off right now with this particular project than you would be to wait, say no because it's coming. You're not going to be able to stop it. In 81, look at Bethlehem. How many of you thought that you could not even hardly get through Bethlehem anymore? You never realized what was going to happen there, and it's happening. Now, what is going to stop the growth? You're going to have houses up there. They could put houses in there. How about across the street where the big red barn is with all that land over there? That could be full of houses one of these days. The only thing that is saving Walton County right now from major, major growth is number one, land cost, number two, development cost, and number three, thank God we don't have sewer out.
Thank you very much.
If we had sewer out there, you're talking about 75-foot lots, and you're talking about stacking houses in there, left and right. Now, if this commission ever went to decide we won't put in sewer, I'd be the first one up here to fight you tooth and nail for it. But for something like this, and for what I know, that that piece of property is going to end up being one of these days, I have to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does the applicant want to make a rebuttal? If not, I'm ready to close the public hearing and... Well, I guess I am going to close the public hearing.
Just a couple of points I want to hit back on that I don't know that everyone understands and some of the folks out that way. The DOT has approved to put in a roundabout. We know it's coming. I think it's coming in 2007?
Fall 2007.
So that's going to fix the accidents that we all see. I see it all the time as well. I hate it. And like the gentleman just up here before, certain growth I understand is coming, but I agree with him. If there was to be a vote to put sewer in this county, I'd be right in line with him and everybody else here to say no. And I am a developer and a builder, and I don't want to see that kind of growth. I don't support it. I've lived here my whole life. I've been in Walton County since I was a little boy. But I do love this county. I like building quality products. I build quality homes on large tax land, and that's what I promote. I don't like houses 75-foot, just like he had mentioned. I won't not support that. I'll be right in line with you guys. But this project, I know what it is. It won't affect traffic as bad as everyone seemed to think it will, and if it's done correctly, I think it'll look nice. And again, it's, I think I would prefer that than another 50, 60 houses with that much more traffic and Amazon cars and buses and everything else that you guys seem to hate would just bring more of that. So anyway, I just wanted to rebut on that and just let y'all know that we're going to make it look nice. That's our goal.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we will close the public hearing and entertain discussion from the board and our motions.
Chairman, I'd like to make a statement. I'm a lifelong resident of Walton County too, with roots in the county all the way back to the 1800s. These decisions are not easy. I mean, as the gentleman just said, I've been telling people for the last 10 years, you're not going to stop the growth that's coming. All we can do is manage it. And, you know, Mr. Carruth, I've met with him. He's been an outstanding neighbor and outstanding citizen in Walton County. So with that being said, and knowing that this is a tough decision, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this with the planning and zoning recommendations. I'm going to ask our planning department to follow up with the DOT and confirm what they would like us to do out there. And I'm also going to say that I'd like to see this board look into any and all improvements that we can do to Bentley Road to help that situation.
Okay.
If the chairman will allow it.
Mr. Chairman?
I mean, you've made the motion. As part of the procedure, does anyone-
I don't mind you making a statement.
I have to thank you for your input. Is it possible that we're actually residents of Bentley Road, I just spent one quick second?
No, I've closed the public hearing. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We presently have a motion.
Second.
Oh, we do have a second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
The public hearing is closed, but can we hear that lady? Is there anything that we can't hear from her? Just one second? I mean, one minute?
Mr. Chairman?
I mean, if the-
One, one, Mr. Chairman, give her one, give her one minute, if you don't mind. Just give her one minute, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
If Mr. Adams-
Because I've never dealt with this before since I've been on the board after we closed the public hearing, someone out there-
I wish you would have said earlier, but-
And that's fine.
Just give her one minute.
We'll go back and open the public hearing and let her make a statement.
Did you have to open the public hearing?
But we have a motion and a second.
Do we have to open the public hearing back up, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
I think you need to open the public hearing. There are just a couple of-
Let her make her statement before there's discussion on the motion.
One minute, ma'am.
Okay, this doesn't have to do, I respect that, that you have your motion. I just wanted to, I know the growth is coming. I know it is. I grew up in Gwinnett County, right at the Walton County line, so I know what's coming. That's not my problem. Safety is my issue, and I know that's part of y'all's mission statement. And being a resident of Bentley Road, I just wanted to see if this would be an opportunity to make that a safer road because it's already bad. This is not going to help anything, but it's not going to, it still needs to be addressed while that is being done to the physical road. So it was just, is there any place that would be the appropriate place to put forward, or is there going to be another meeting about how that's done on Bentley Road?
And your name again?
Tricia Garman.
And you live where?
Bentley Road, 4764 Bentley Road.
4764.
I waited to speak because I wasn't in, you know, I don't want to speak against somebody doing something on their own property, but I needed to-
Safety's, safety's a big-
There's an applicable thing-
Safety's a big issue.
Yes.
We finally, finally addressed the youth jersey, I mean Monroe jersey, Monroe youth. I'll get it right here in a minute, where we just had the recent two deaths.
I never meant to speak out of turn. I really didn't. I was just trying to get everybody else that was strictly for and strictly against. I understand the process, and that's why I needed to wait until the last to make my statement.
Okay.
That's what I was doing.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Chairman, as far as my motion, just to restate, like I make a motion to approve, following all the planning, zoning guidelines, confirming DOT access, what, you know, something in writing from them, what they want us to do, and then also exploring any and all options to improve safety on Bentley Road.
All right, the motion has been restated. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All right, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
I have one no. And that was Commissioner Warren? Okay. All right, this one passes and we'll, we'll go on to number two.
I might want to let them leave, Mr.-
Y'all want a break for a minute for those that's going to leave and... Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. Doubt is diminished.
This is a rocky place for me, you know?
Where's Sharona?
I'm right here.
Oh, you were here.
Yes, sir.
All right, 4.2 has been requested to be withdrawn.
Yes, sir. That is correct. We just need to vote to accept that.
And entertain a motion to accept the request to withdraw 4.2? Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? All right, 4.3, Sharona.
Okay. All right. This is Z24030001, approval of this case. Rezone 17, no, sorry. Yeah, rezone 17 acres from A1 to A for a beef cattle business. The applicant and owners are Gene William and Gina Hockaday. Property is located at 26 Social Circle Fair Play Road and at Pennell, the intersection there. This is in District Four. As I stated, the applicant would like to raise beef. Phil explained that a little bit more. There was no opposition, and the motion to approve was unanimous.
Okay. All right, we'll open a public hearing on 4.3. Is the applicant here? And please come forward and tell us what you've got plans for. Start off by your name and address, please.
Gina and William Hockaday, and we're at 26 Social Circle Fair Play Road. The house is on two acres, and then we have the adjoining 15 acres. For the past couple of years, we've raised beef cattle and just sell into family and friends so far. Most of our cattle is on other properties that we lease, and then we bring five to six to our 15 acres at a time to feed them out. When it's time for processing, we load them up, take them to a processor in Forsyth, Georgia.
Off-site processing, correct.
That's right, sir.
Okay.
And then, once it's ready, we go pick up the frozen product. We bring it back and we store it in our freezers at our home. We've purchased an enclosed trailer. We have a mobile retail license from the-
USDA.
USDA. And so we can, you know, technically sell our product at farmers' markets and things like that, but wanted to take it a step further and get our business license with Walton County. And they said in order to do that, we had to zone from A1 to A because our address is in Walton County and is the technical business address.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else here in support of this rezoning? Seeing none, is there anyone here in opposition to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board their wishes.
I'd like to motion we approve.
Yep, Bo Warren made a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? Passes unanimous. Thank you all. 4.4?
That was easy.
Don't have too many easy ones in zoning.
This is true. Okay. 4.4, denial of Z24030001, which is to rezone 2.24 acres from B2 to M1. Whoops. Sorry, guys. For a portable concrete plant, applicant is Norman Kenebrew. Owner's Philip Osborne. Property is located at 2435 Highway 278. This is in District Four. There was, let's see, there was some opposition, you know, with concerns about the dust and other things that this may bring. It was recommended for denial unanimously.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open a public hearing on 4.4 and ask, is the applicant here and would they like to come forward and tell us what they have planned? Is the applicant here, Sharona?
Not yet, sir.
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
They may not have come because it was recommended for denial, but I'd-
It's recommended for denial?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Applicant is not here. If someone wants to speak in opposition to this, feel free to come forward, please. And we'll go through the process. I think it's muted. I think it'll be turned down, but let's go through the process.
My name's Matthew Bray. I live on Hancock Drive, just outside Social Circle, Georgia. Regarding the rezoning request, Planning Commission recommended denial, which I am thankful for, and believe they're on the right track there. Reasons for denial that I also agree with them with and others would be increased air, noise, and dust pollution, increased heavy truck traffic turning in and out of the property where there's not the best visibility as you're heading northeast on Highway 278. You're cresting a hill, and there's no center turn lane, and there's nothing in the application stating that they would be pursuing a center turn lane to get concrete trucks out of the way of moving traffic. Hours of operation associated with concrete loads heading out can be rather early in the morning, extremely early actually, as they're trying to get first loads out to job sites as early as 6, 7, 8 o'clock in the morning. They have to be on-site loading trucks and mixing much earlier. Associated with that is a lot of lighting and noise, such as truck backup buzzers, beeper alarms. And when they're being loaded out, very often trucks sit at high idle, creates a lot of engine noise. It's quite obnoxious if you're ever near one when they're doing that. They're turning the drum to mix the concrete as it's being loaded. There aren't currently existing similar uses. There are a couple that are zoned M1, but they're a much lower level use. It's a self-contained building for a metal fabrication or maybe air conditioning shop. And then there's a small motor lawnmower shop, so much less intense uses, although they are nearby. are nearby. The DRI that was submitted, some paraphrases here, they stated the proposed project would not elevate the public health of the surrounding area because of the concerns of the residences and the homes around. It did say although it would value by job creation, it has potential to harm the existing community through increased traffic, pollution, and noise. These are people that are a whole lot smarter than I making these recommendations. They also included prior to approval, the county should measure the life cycle costs of the infrastructure needed to serve the project to make sure that the county is not committing to more maintenance expenses than the new tax revenue would cover. The wear and tear on the streets for loaded concrete trucks is pretty intense. It would cost and cause wear that would require more maintenance. The M1 District for Walton County zoning ordinances states it's composed primarily of wholesale warehousing, trade shops, light manufacturing uses located on or near existing community facilities and transportation corridors. The intent of the district is to establish areas of industrial use which would be less objectionable by reasons of dust, odor, noise, traffic safety, or congestion than those of the M2 heavy industrial district. Such use should be encouraged to locate adjacent to existing similar uses in accordance with the policies in the comprehensive use plan. When considering the rezonings, it states that such proposed use should not substantially affect or alter nearby property values. That'll be quite negative for residences nearby. It would definitely affect residential, which there's both front and backside. Comprehensive land use plan lists this area as a developing rural area. It lists it as a region where little to no development has taken place, but there is development pressure. They're characterized by limited single-family subdivisions, individual large single-family lots, agriculture uses, protected lands and forests. The region should strive to protect these areas by limiting infrastructure investments to targeted areas. Limiting that in those areas would constrain the amount of additional growth that's possible. In developing rural areas, it says care should be taken not to spur unwanted growth. I'm not naive, nor do I believe growth won't be and shouldn't be completely stopped, but it does need to be regulated and controlled, which is what y'all and the Planning Commission do. And I believe that that should be regulated and controlled to protect the current citizens and residents of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak against this?
Good evening again. Megan Leinbaugh. I am here on behalf of, I have a brief video, like a 30-second video, that another concerned citizen who lives very close to this parcel sent me. She was unable to be here today and so I told her that I would show that to you. It, I think Matthew did a great job of touching on a lot of things and this is just basically her driving by the area to show you traffic patterns and some of the safety issues that will corroborate what Matthew's already shared with us. So I'm not sure who has that, but...
I don't know anything about a video. That's what I was asking.
No, that's not it. So...
It's less than 30 seconds. It's just her driving by so you can see where the parcel is.
And do you have her video?
Sharona, she was supposed to send it on a thumb drive.
That's what I figured.
Did you bring a thumb drive? I did see the video and there was a lot of traffic, but yeah, she didn't bring a thumb drive.
I don't know the compatibility of your system, so I just sent it. It was a YouTube link. I just thought you could click it and watch it and turn, as opposed to having to deal with compatibility issues of internal drives.
I think, I'm not 100% positive, but I think the board's ready to uphold the Planning Commission's recommendation and lay this to rest.
Okay, I just, I told her that I would show it and so I tried to be a woman of my word, so...
I understand. I just asked...
If she's watching at home, I tried.
I just asked the commissioner in that district and he is, with your permission, I'm going to close the public hearing and since the applicant's not here, and see if we can't get a motion on 4.4.
I'd like to make a motion to uphold the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and deny this rezoning application.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to uphold the Planning Commission's recommendation of denial. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That one's dead. Thank y'all. All right, we still have planning and development. We have an annexation request from the city of Loganville. Thank y'all for coming.
Yes, sir. Everyone should have a copy of this. It is a 100% annexation on 60 acres located at Highway 20 and Tuck Road to be annexed into the city. There is some commercial townhouses and single-family dwellings as a part of this annexation.
So this is presently in Walton County, go in the city of Loganville.
Right.
And part of it's in Gwinnett. I'm familiar with the Tuck farm.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Entertainer motion that we approve the annexation request.
Hey, one question. Morris, how's that work out with our water agreement?
We don't have a lot of water.
Okay.
We don't really have any.
It's, 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 we have a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we have a capital improvements element annual update.
And I think we'll open a public hearing on this one.
Okay.
And then I'll explain what it is and then we can see if anybody wants to speak and then we can...
We will open a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
On the adoption of the capital improvements element annual update. Rhonda, I mean, Sharona, you want to start by explaining to the board what?
Yes, sir. So what this is, is each year we have to send in an annual report to the Regional Commission. They review it and then it's sent to the Department of Community Affairs. They review it. And this just shows how much has been collected over the last year and how much has been expended and how much is encumbered. We did have to add a correction on the FY '22 sheet that was, there was just two columns that were added inadvertently and they didn't catch it last year, but they caught it this year. And so we're correcting that. So that's all that is, is a correction. None of the numbers really change. Everything that was collected is the same. Everything that was expended was the same. And then the rest of it is just our community work program, the projects that are coming up that will be used or funded partly by impact fees.
Okay. And this is predominantly the impact fee schedules and the projects they've been spent on.
This is a report.
Okay. All right, does the general public like to make a comment? You can see how the impact fees are spent. We just sent Loganville Library a million bucks of collected impact fees. They're spent on specific projects that they're collecting on. All right, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. You have a copy of your administrative consent agenda? And there's several, several things on it. Of course, your minutes, all the budgeted purchases and the money's being spent on the capital projects. Got the Sheriff's Office with night vision and a bulletproof vest grant. Got amendment to the inmate medical agreement with correct help. That's through the Sheriff's Department. Believe it or not, we had to charge off some water bills. Some people went out of business or whatever and didn't pay their last water bills. Any questions on these? If not, entertain a motion that they be approved.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. All right, resolution 7.1, emergency management service. We've got a, we've got a policy in case we get in dire need and have disasters of how we're going to distribute needed water and other supplies to the community.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Yeah, so that's correct. We recently discovered GMA offers a 2.5% increase on the money's return during a federal declaration emergency. And part of that process to get that 2.5% extra is to have a pot plan and to have a couple of other steps. We've completed everything and this is the only thing that we have left to do. So we're just in front of you not to get approval on a point of distribution plan. The plan basically just spells out how emergency management and its partners are going to establish these points of distribution, the hours of operation, you know. Of course, that all depends on the emergency, on what supplies we get. Water, tarps, and MREs is basically what we get from the state, but as we know, during disasters, the community comes together and just donates everything. So they call that the disaster within the disaster. So this is just spelling out how we're going to manage all that. And I'll be glad to answer any burning questions y'all have on it. Pretty self-explanatory, simple plan.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Relate to the sites. How are the sites picked? Because I don't think there's any site in District Six, if I read this right.
I think we have sites in all districts.
You sure?
But our problem is parking lots. We have to go with the big parking lots. And if you look in the plan, there's a diagram of how we set it up. Depending on what level we set up, depends on what parking lot we go to. That, and we have to get MOUs with each business or whoever we use their parking lot with.
Just please confirm there's one in District Six, if you don't mind. I'm going to get a chance.
Yes, I will. I'll get back to you on that when we pull our list up.
Please do. Thanks.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion that we adopt this CPOD.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. All right, you got a list of the 24 budget amendments and project links budgets. Milton is coming up to answer any questions and...
Good evening. There's eight. You might have a copy of the amendment summary. There's eight amendments. Five of the eight, that'd be four, five, six, seven, and eight, relate to the project length budgets that you also have a copy of. They're all using SPOSS money. We're able to use SPOSS instead of the general fund. This, number two, is impact fees is being used. So really, the third one is the only one where the general fund is used. I'll be happy to answer questions on these, if you have any in particular.
Well, the big one's in there for the livestock covering area out at Crystal so that the goat people will get off my back and they got a place to show their goats and livestock again, so...
Any questions?
All right, entertainer motion that we approve the budget amendments and the project link budget.
So moved.
Our second.
Motion, got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. 7.3, at the end of the year, you guys generally authorize the chairman, which is me, to amend the 24 budget in the year-end closing process, if you so choose.
I'll make that motion, Chairman.
All right, we got a motion. We got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. 7.4 is the adoption of the fiscal year '25 budget.
Chairman, I'd like to say the proposed budget was presented at the May meeting. Jennifer, I believe, did a good job. I wasn't here, but it's been posted on the county website for over a month.
It was presented and we had some public questions, if I remember correct. I was in the middle of election. I don't remember much. It was kind of a haze.
We also had the required public hearing on the 21st.
Okay. Well, we need to go ahead and adopt the fiscal year '25 budget and move forward on that. I make a motion to approve? We got a motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
I got a couple of questions. I know it was a little bit of a, I had some mentions of the increase to me, but pretty much the budget is presented. We don't have any foreseeable additions or anything coming that are well noted, that the budget is pretty much the budget as best we know it.
Well, the budget, this particular budget, there was highlights given to the board that they've got right here.
You read this.
And it's as lean as we could get it. Budgets will be amended. It's inevitable. I mean, you can budget to buy a fire truck at $250,000 and once you order it, it may be $276.
No, it's going to be closer to $600.
And, but is that your question?
Yes, sir. Just to make sure that like the budget as we know it, just for the people, it's presented as lean as we can possibly get it with everything in it that's necessary at this time.
It is. And trying to live within our revenue based on the present mill rate and the present sales tax revenues.
Before you vote, I just want to personally say thank you to Milton. This may be our last, well, I guess it will be our last budget that Milton gets to work on, but you and your staff have done a great job and thank you for making it publicly available on the website so that anybody and everybody can see it. I think that the number of people that show up with questions and the limited questions we do have, we're able to take care of a lot of them in advance because it is available for people to go down, all the way down into each line item and each department online.
Thank you. That's cliche.
Highly appreciated.
Yes, Milton, I want to thank you as well. And I do want to point out one thing that we get questions from, you know, we get hit hard on social media and hit hard on all these different things about being transparent. And I've been on this board for 12 years now and it's very obvious that we are doing our best to be transparent and get the information out to the public. And I want to commend the board and commend John and commend our departments for rising to that challenge from the citizens and making things transparent and giving them plenty of time to respond to budgets and different things. We only had like three people show up at the budget hearing, so, I mean, that's not because it wasn't put out there. It was put out there and three people showed up. So, you know, we're doing what we can to be transparent and want to commend the board for doing that job.
All right.
Second, Milton, you're doing a great job, buddy. We're going to miss you.
Thank you, sir.
I for one am. I can tell you that. But, all right, we have a motion and a second. Let's call the vote and adopt this budget, please. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Budget's adopted. Thank you, Milton. All right, we have the county manager's update.
I've got quite a few things I want to cover with you tonight, just to be able to go over. As everybody knows, assessment notices were mailed out May 7th. We've been getting quite a few questions about that, but there's a 45-day appeal period and that concludes June 21. I think one of the biggest misconceptions is that everybody saw increases in their home values on the assessments and automatically thought that that meant a guaranteed increase in your property taxes. With Walton County having the homestead exemption for residential properties that are under homestead, that property value could go up and up and up, you know, and then into the future and your taxes are going to be based on the amount that you locked in at the time that the homestead exemption was awarded. So just... Uh, so just to share that with everybody, we're going to be putting out some additional information on that, trying to help make sure everybody understands. But an assessment increase does not mean necessarily a, uh, property tax increase. The second thing I wanted to share with you is that, uh, we're going after a $50,000 grant with the Walton County Healthcare Foundation and that is to, um, replace, uh, exercise equipment in Meridian and Felker Community Centers. Those, um, exercise equipment, uh, in those facilities have seen, uh, high use and we're starting to have some, uh, repair and maintenance problems, so we're going after those for a replacement. As of right now, registration numbers, volleyball and basketball for the summer is, is showing about 450 participants. Fall sports, that includes baseball, softball, soccer, cross-country, football, uh, tag and flag and cheer, 2,200 participants have, uh, registered in Parks and Recreation. So that, uh, is pretty amazing. And the Ayers Park Splash Pad opened on May 14th and, um, there was over a thousand, uh, visitors in the first two weeks. So that's another facility that's, uh, seeing great success. As we move forward under, uh, Public Works, just wanted to make sure everybody knew that we completed L-MIG and SPOSS resurfacing projects on Henderson Ridge Subdivision, uh, Mitchell Road, and we began the 2024 L-MIG SPOSS resurfacing project on Mountain Vernon Road. And then pavement overlay for the completed culvert replacement on Nikki Lane, um, as we move through with that. Just wanted to, um, bring up under, uh, EMS, um, they still have full-time paramedic positions open, um, in their department and we would, uh, appreciate some applications for that. On, under the finance, um, we're, we're finishing up the fiscal year. We are, uh, slowing down on POs and purchase requests and, uh, those have already been sent out a deadline on those. So we're going ahead and tightening up on the year-end, um, expenditures. And then your employee portal is completely, uh, up and running. That provides access to employees. Uh, they can view their personal information and availability and print checks, uh, um, to see their checks on deposits and W2s, uh, through that system, just upgrading and modernizing that. The next thing that we've got going on is in, um, recycling. Just your program, uh, last month, 182 mattresses were, um, dropped off at the recycling, uh, facility. Those will go to the recycling center. And then 300 students and teachers in two groups from both Social Circle and Walnut Grove Elementary came through and learned about recycling and the importance of, um, decreasing the waste stream going into our landfills. Let me see, one other. Under human resources, um, we, the main thing I wanted to let you know is that we're seeing such great, uh, use of the employee health clinic. We are bringing on our second one-to-one health, a nurse practitioner as Mira, and she was scheduled to start June 10th. That's so that we can keep up that level of service, so that we keep up the employees and their dependents utilizing that because it is resulting in a significant cost savings. We talked a little bit about the cost savings, but as we reach about a full year of operation, as we approach June, we'll be bringing back a special report for you to show the total cost savings minus the cost of the health clinic operation to show you your total, uh, savings that you're seeing. And again, another spinoff of that is for the first time I've been doing this in 25 years, we saw a, a health insurance premium decrease, um, for our employee health plan, which is, um, phenomenal and pretty unheard of. Here's a statistic that I wanted to bring to your attention because I think it's a little bit surprising and shows that we still have some work to do, um, involving, uh, county, uh, staffing and employment. And that is that we have, um, currently as of May 30th, 2024, there are a total of 876 employees, um, employed by Walton County. And we have 122 vacant positions. So we are, we are, um, struggling to compete. We're struggling to, uh, get some of those positions filled and we realize we do have some work to do and, um, will be, uh, working with the different departments to address that. But I wanted to make sure that you are all aware of that, um, concern and that challenge that we're facing.
Are all of those full-time positions, John?
Not all of them, no. Not all of them. They're, they're a combination of all of that. There's a good number of those full-time and a smaller number that are seasonal or part-time.
Okay.
And, you know, we, we have positions in, um, fire, for instance, that are, uh, not full-time that we, that we count in that as well. Under county water, we currently have 17,795 active customers. We have, um, projects in place. Uh, the water line, uh, pipe has been moved on the Good Hope side of 83 for the DOT, uh, bridge project. And they're now in the process of lowering the pipe on the Monroe side for that, for that. The Dickerson Group has started on Center Hill Church Road. They've started out slow, but we're hoping that they ramp up on that one. And we're also working with the, uh, City of Monroe on a, a new connection to replace that at the 78 Bridge. EMA, they've done a great job on getting us updated so that we can, um, gain full reimbursement. One of the additional things that they did was they were able to, um, attend a, uh, debriefing and, and what's called a hot wash of the, um, Rockdale, uh, tornado, um, that was actually coming our way until it hit I-20. So we were able to attend that and learn a lot of, uh, valuable, uh, lessons from that response down there. And we also sent, um, staff from Walton County down that direction to help out with the emergency efforts because, um, strong believer in help your neighbors because you might need help one day. The, um, the next thing we are, we were ramping up with a Civic Plus, um, emergency notification awareness program. And if anybody has Facebook out there, please share it with us because the more people we get to, um, subscribe and enter their phone number, the more people we can reach in a moment's notice if we do have an emergency across the county. The, um... Under facilities, we've already talked about the livestock barn at the Ag Facility. That's moving forward. We're also working on, um, the, uh, Ayers Park expansion of pickleball courts in conjunction with the city of between. And, um, they're doing, you see a lift out here, they're doing some roof repairs and some ongoing regular maintenance here to the historic courthouse that was built in 1883. And as everybody knows, it takes a little bit of ongoing work to keep something this old going. In fire, six new personnel. You know, we mentioned earlier that we were having, we were down quite a few people. Six new personnel were, um, uh, have been hired and we've started a new recruit class. That'll make the department full with the current available positions. So that's, uh, wonderful news out of fire. Also, under a public notice, I want to make sure I was, uh, able to share this. A fire safety company is operating in Walton County that is showing up, uh, to places of business under the preface of conducting a mandatory fire inspection. The company then demands that any deficiencies found during the inspection be repaired and addressed immediately and fees for those repairs be paid at once. Inspectors for that company may appear to be government inspector agent, however, they're not affiliated with Walton County or Walton County Fire Marshal's Office. The fire office, uh, conducts annual fire inspections of businesses within the unincorporated areas of Walton County, but those inspectors have a Walton County Fire Marshal's Office, um, uniform. They're, uh, dressed in fire department attire and have a Walton County Fire Rescue badge as well as proper ID. So I just wanted to make sure we shared that with the general public and with businesses so that they can kind of be on the lookout, lookout. If that does occur, please do notify us through 911 so that we can, uh, address that accordingly. One other thing, and then I've got an introduction to make. We've been continuing to do some research on the, uh, possibility of special tax districts. The, the, uh, alternative is a stormwater utility. And moving forward with like many of the more metro areas, that alternative, just to do the study and to begin to formulate a, uh, formula-based system for addressing all stormwater across the entire county, um, estimates I've received are between 75 and a hundred thousand dollars just to create a plan. I think we talked about it last month. I think that we're, uh, more, uh, in tune with moving forward with the potential of special tax districts. There are ways to do that, uh, so that that community that's benefiting from a, uh, a detention pond that's not being maintained, the tax district is placed on those parcels that are benefiting and, um, they're the only ones that are charged. So you can, you can do it in phases and I'm recommending tonight that we move forward in phases because we can do that right now for those subdivisions where the HOA has become defunct. There are some communities who grow it into a program to where HOAs can petition to the commission to include their community in that. And you end up with a certain number of residents within the, uh, within the district who actually, um, you meet a threshold and the county agrees to take that on. That's going to come with more administration and more cost and more equipment to get in there and do that. Or there is an alternative, I've talked to three different, um, they're essentially like landscape companies to where the county can contract with them for them to go in at a reduced cost to actually, uh, maintain stormwater facilities. Now, as we're starting out, what that will require is that there be a fund created so that we can go in and work with these different, we can pre-approve different firms that can go in and bring up the detention pond to where it needs to be on a maintenance level, uh, maybe, uh, reinforcing the, uh, outfall to make sure that we're not causing further problems downstream. But then that way, we can go back and have a specific calculation to send to the, um, uh, tax assessor's office to then be applied within that community on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So, um, moving forward with that, unless anybody's opposed to going all the way, uh, doing the tax district, want to go all the way to the stormwater utility, we'll proceed in that fashion. We'll finalize things with CHIP and we'll be bringing back things for you to look at so that you can formally enact that. Now, that's going to require some public hearings and some announcements because anytime you have that taxing authority, just like with the, uh, 2025 budget, you have to have a public hearing for those involved. We'll work with Sharna's Office in Planning and Development to make sure that anybody that would be impacted would be notified and they have the advance notice. But we can start building that system, um, neighborhood by neighborhood. And I think it'll allow us to grow into a successful program if we only focus on those that are, uh, defunct right now. Because the next thing that we can also do is we can, through our inspector's office, uh, involving stormwater, we can move forward with notifying each and every community of what level of expectation that we have for maintenance of their own detention ponds and place that responsibility back on them. That way we can kind of have a two-pronged approach of addressing what's been abandoned and then addressing what, and holding each individual community responsible for what they're benefiting from in the stormwater aspect. It'll all fall under health, safety, and welfare. And, uh, I believe it'll give us kind of a, um, a staged and, uh, baby step approach to moving forward because stormwater, just like the last storm we just had roll through here, we had quite a bit of stormwater, um, and a lot of our, uh, systems were inundated across, uh, not only the city here, but across the county. But, um, tax districts looked like the way to go, but we'll move forward with doing that and bring, we'll have to have amendments to it if we move forward with additional measures. But we, I think that's a good way to start out in the, in the short term. With that, I've just got one person I wanted, uh, to recognize, introduce, uh, the entire commission and the public to. This is Ben Hammond. Ben has been with, uh, he's, uh, been with the Sheriff's Department, uh, since 2018. Ben was doing a lot of their webpage work and, uh, some of their social media, but, um, he, he rose to the top as we were interviewing for our new public information officer, uh, position. And contrary to some people, uh, I've got to ask a question or two if I hired a bodyguard, but it's not a bodyguard, it's our public information officer. And, uh, just wanted to welcome him, uh, to his new role. He is also the Vice President of the Deputies Beyond the Badge Foundation, our nonprofit through our Sheriff's Department. And he's going to continue in that role as well as keep, keep his certification as we, uh, move forward with his new, uh, venture that we've got him here. But he's, uh, already started, already, um, moved over from the Sheriff's Department and become a, a valued addition to the, uh, staff here at the courthouse.
All right. Welcome.
Welcome, Ben.
Ben.
Welcome.
Does that conclude your report, John?
Sir.
That was long enough. Thank you very much.
Can I ask one thing before John closes out?
Yes, please.
I, uh, I've gotten several complaints out on HDA the road about folks speeding and I'm going to ask as far as, and I'm talking about the section between Monroe, Jersey and Central Circle, Jersey Road. Several folks, there's something we can look at doing a traffic study out there and maybe look at something to do with the speed limit at some point based off the traffic study and what we found.
Sure, we can work with Public Works and make sure we get some traffic counts and some different things like that out there.
Okay, thank you.
Before we go to the public comment, there's one more thing I need to bring up. And Ben, we'll get you to take pictures of it tomorrow and get it on our, there's a weed out there called hogweed and everyone sees it right now. It's along fence lines and creeks and it looks like a sultana. It's white, has the big blooms. You see them alongside of the road. It is highly poisonous. Do not stop and cut this plant to make a flower arrangement, you'll end up in Piedmont Hospital. It is highly poisonous and it's a plant that's invasive and it's, uh, all over the southeastern United States, but it is in full bloom right now. And we will get a picture of it and put it on our webpage. The hospital told me last year there were several women ended up in the hospital out cutting flowers. So be very careful with the, it's five, six, eight foot tall, uh, anywhere from four foot five, you'll see it if you look for it. It's, it's, uh, a very dominant plant. With that being said, we have, is Kathy Swanson here? She signed up for public comment. Maybe she got tired of waiting on us.
She left.
Well, if she's not here, we have some real estate matters we need to, uh, retire to executive session. It shouldn't be long, then we can come back out if there's an announcement, we'll make it. If not, we can come back out, but I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Got a motion?
What's, what's the business in executive session, Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Real estate.
Real estate.
Yeah, a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We'll be right back hopefully.